Okay, thanks Bob. Good evening, everyone. It's -- ooh, echo. Call the meeting to order. And if anyone's recording, would they make it known? Thank you. First on the agenda, I was just looking Dave for that decision for SNH. Do you know where that is?
Yeah, it's attached to the front of the folder for the SNH. Should be one of those blue folders.
Looks a little funny. This is just a formality to get signatures for an action we took on September 22nd.
Does it require Mike's signature?
His clerk.
No, no Mike Baptiste.
Oh. Yeah, he was here that evening, but there's more than one copy. Nope, there's not. There's a spot for a clerk. We have a plan revision for the Dollar Store site plan. What they did was Mass Highway changed the the radius on their entrance drives. And as part of the conditions of their approval was any change had to come back.
Everything's good on that.
That's what they told me. So they changed the radius. I guess Mass Highway's standard radius is 30 feet and their original proposal was a 20 foot. Correct, Dave?
Yeah, they had two separate radiuses on the two separate openings, but both of which were less than 30 feet. So Mass Highway requested that both be 30 feet, which is shown on their revised plan. Both the original plan and the revised plans are there in case you want to compare the two.
That's all, change the radius.
That's it, right.
Did the change affect any parking spaces?
Didn't affect any parking spaces, but it did sort of change the shape of the landscape islands between the parking and Mass Highway because the radius cut into it a little bit more. But that's really the only change.
Side of the old White Mines Hotel. I know it's a tough act to follow, but I think the radius might just do the trick. So, any questions on that or?
That would be considered a minor revision.
So is that a motion to accept the changes as a minor modification?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept.
Second.
The town's revisions for the DOT's requirements.
Has Dave taken the crib notes tonight?
Yes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Whoever says revision is something already voted, we can vote on that right away, Chairman.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, so moved. Next, we have an approval not required plan from A.D. Makepeace, Maple Springs, too.
I actually have slightly, there are two typographical errors on this. I have new mylas and two new sets, large and half-size.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Payne. I'm here as an employee of the A.D. Makepeace Company with Ken Conkey from Beals &amp; Thomas. You may recall that back in April, we were before the board in order to create several parcels around, primarily around frame revile, the locator of Maple Springs. Over the years, we've found it preferential to isolate the bogs from the upland when we get into matters with our ag bank and other banks so they can clearly claim their own collateral and jurisdiction, if you will. We're back this evening asking for the creation of additional parcels consistent with that A&R in all applicable regulations, simply as a way to isolate chunks of land because we're going to initiate the transfer of development rights by law on the northernmost parcel that you see as you hold that on a north-to-south direction. We're coordinating with Mr. Pichette in his dual roles here this evening to create these parcels. And then we will be in with the planning board to initiate the transfer of development rights by law and isolate the northernmost parcel to hopefully pull off a TDR bylaw application, Mr. Chairman. As you know, a critical and concurrent element of the planning board work with that effort is the ConCon's work. So we're trying to run them both concurrently. It will be a challenge, but we realize that. But step one is to ask you this evening to sign the A&R so we can create the parcels and focus our efforts on a more manageable scale for our first time with the TDR bylaw.
Hope I can follow this. You're creating H1, H2, F1, and F2.
Yes. Taking the bigger, large chunks and drawing lines to create the parcels.
And the H1 is the one you plan to?
The big one at the north. Yeah, 300 and some odd acres. We'll start up north, see if we can get our act together on that one piece, and then work our way through.
We have any questions from the board? I think we'll all have to get our act together on that one.
Yeah. You know, we've met with Ken and Richard Cirque though, so I think when we come into you, it's going to be a very much bylaw says X, here's our response. Bylaw says Y, here's our response. We'll plug it right through, providing we can pull off the concurrent effort with the ConCon that has to validate our assertions as to what the upland is. But we seem to have a good plan going with Stacy of Beals &amp; Thomas and Dave Pichette and his other roles, so we'll try to pull it together.
At least you'll only have one person to deal with it.
It's nice, it really is. I don't know how David feels, but we're quite busy.
Any questions? Looking for a motion. Who does? Zero second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Or opposed? So we have four sheets here that are.
Five sheets, I think, Charlie.
Yep, I see A&R five, so. Just one second. You just need the mylas or you want to sign something else?
Mylas, fine.
Got a sign, get an extra set.
And these are the corrected plans?
Yes.
And we have one set.
These videos, they don't get confused? Those are the good ones.
It should be two good sets.
Yeah, I'll sign two. Do you need one of those? Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have the public hearing. Is this, set the whole ad in?
What's that?
Is that the advertisement that was posted? I like it, it's a lot more abbreviated than the usual ones. First public hearing on the agenda is for the street layout of Lynn Road and Beschant Way. We don't have any mylas, we just have the seat of the advertising. Notice is hereby given that the Wayham Planning Board will conduct a public hearing in room 320 of Wayham Aldi Service Center, 48 Marion Road. Wayham may ask to discuss the following proposed article. To see if the town will vote to accept the layout on file with the town clerk of the following roads and ways, Beschant Way and Lynn Road, and further that the town authorize a voter selectman to take by eminent domain or accept donations of the privately owned property that include the layout of said roadways.
I have copies of our layout plan. Would that be helpful to pass that out?
Sure.
My name is Diane Murphy and I am one of three trustees from the Beaver Meadows Homeowners Association. Unfortunately, the other two trustees couldn't be here this evening. One is recovering from his second treatment for a second surgery for cancer and the other is working tonight, so. I received the report this afternoon at about 2:00 and the road inspection report that was done on October 6th. And I wondered if I could address some of the items that are on the report.
Certainly.
Maintenance of the mailboxes are covered by our covenants, so that's something that we're all obligated to do anyway. That's item number two. Maintenance of the landscape, which is item one. We understand and fully accept that. And the maintenance of the individual lamp posts that lie within the limits of the layouts are also covered under a covenant that the contractor, the developer of our driveways, of our streets, rather, in our neighborhood, put together back in 2004. I have copies of that covenant. Would you like to see that?
Yeah, I believe that you were one of the, that was one of the first developments to use the driveway lantern covenant, so to speak.
Yes.
Where each property has their own lantern that's wired directly and lights the street.
Exactly. And the positive aspect of that is that the town would not have to pay for street lighting in our neighborhood. And that can be costly. And it is the homeowners' responsibility to maintain those lanterns and provide light for our streets. So we are fully in agreement with that as well. And understand that the maintenance of the stormwater damaged drainage facilities would be the responsibility of the homeowners. We accept that finding and we have done maintenance of those areas for the past several years. The inspection notes some deficiencies that were found in our streets and the first four items. Does everyone have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. The first four items will take us some time to complete. We'll have to contact someone to make those repairs to the sewer manhole. And now the town, it is town sewerage and I didn't know where the town responsibility for the sewerage piping and all that ends and where it becomes responsibility of the homeowners. Could someone kind of explain that for me?
I believe while you are on town sewer, I think those mains were brought in by the developer.
Okay.
So just like the roadway, it belongs to the homeowners association until it gets accepted by the town.
I see, okay.
Or it belongs to your developer if he hasn't.
Okay. So we would need to contact someone who would be able to provide the repairs for us. And the curbing and the cul-de-sac, we can certainly take care of that. And the wheelchair access at the, on the sidewalk on Beschant Way is a little bit of a steep rise there. And I didn't, I assume that that's what they're talking about. It's the ones near the utility boxes in the Beschant Way circle, is that correct?
The.
That's item four.
It's funny because the first sentence says it does meet ADA standards and the second sentence says you have to change it.
Right.
So I think that's a typo.
So, what should it read?
I would say that without seeing it, I would say it's the landing, not so much the ramp. Not the incline, but where it lands, is there something there?
There's a little bit of sideways there, sidewalk there. The houses on that side of the street really don't have sidewalk. Sidewalk begins about a quarter of the way around Beschant Way Circle. Actually, it's at, see where number five and number three are on the Beschant Way Circle? It's right on the edge of that curve into the circle. There's a three and five in lot 13 and lot 14. And it's right where that bounds is located, right on the corner. Am I making clear where I'm indicating?
I know where you are. This particular plan doesn't.
Okay. There's a very short bit of sidewalk there, not even as long as these two tables. And the utility boxes are right behind that. But on the first two houses on the right of Beschant Way don't have any sidewalk. The sidewalk begins at where lot five ends and goes around the circle and on the right-hand side of the street, back out to Lynn Road. And the sidewalk runs actually on the closer side on Lynn Road. So it's just a bit of sidewalk there in Beschant Way.
Can I ask a question? Where the sidewalk meets the ramp?
Yes.
So the ramp, it says that the ramp meets code, but the sidewalk should be addressed. Is the piece of sidewalk that's there that butts the ramp, is there a little?
No, the ramp is simply about as long as these two tables. And then there's a driveway and then the sidewalk begins on the other side of that driveway. It's about halfway into lot five.
We'll have the town engineer clarify that.
Okay, all right. Would appreciate that. And the meets and the bounds on the street, I am assuming, maybe I shouldn't assume, does that need caps on those bounds? Are they like buttons that go on there?
That's a survey marker and you should be able to see it so they can find how to lay the road out.
Okay.
Your plan shows that the bounds are installed, but he couldn't find them, so he thinks they may have been covered by, period.
They could have been covered by grass or.
So if somebody could unearth them to demonstrate that they're there, that would be.
Okay. I'll talk to J.C. Engineering because they went out and checked to make sure the bounds were there, so they can perhaps help us with that. Okay, item six, the three drainage swales, is that pronouncing that right? And should be cleaned with accumulated sediment and the sediment removed. That's what we've been doing for the past several years, so we just get a whole neighborhood, fix our neighborhood day and we all go out with our wheelbarrows and take care of that. We just don't have enough money to have somebody professionally do it. The sign, item seven, the signs that are currently on the street. We have a no parking overnight sign on our streets and that was part of our covenants, our declaration of restricted covenants. And I have copies of those here. The item three indicates that parking will not be allowed on streets except on a temporary basis. A temporary basis is less than overnight parking. So the signs were put in to let people know that according to our covenants, which were filed in 2004, there could be no overnight parking or cars would be towed at owner's expense. So I know people would be concerned if we remove those signs at this point. I don't know where homeowners association versus town ownership come into play when it comes, when there's a covenant that's filed at the registry of deeds. I don't know if you can give us any guidance on that.
If that's the sign he's referring to, I don't think that would affect your street acceptance.
Okay. We also have some signs that there's no parking at the entrance to Beschant Way, opposite Beschant Way. We've had some near accidents where school buses can't navigate the curve around, from Lynn Road into Beschant Way. Or even the curve out because cars are forced to come on the left side of the street and they're head-on with the school bus. And we had an incident where a police car almost collided with a school bus. And we have trash pickup vehicles that have a hard time making the turns when there's cars parked in the streets in that area. So we did install those streets, those signs ourselves to, as a safety issue. And again, that, those covenants are filed with the registry of deeds. So I don't know if they were referring to either of those signs or both of them, or, so if we could get some clarification on that.
Did they need some action from the road commissioners, Dave?
Well, I think at this point, they wouldn't have, since it's not a public road yet, you know? But down the road, if that becomes an issue, then the road commissioners may have to address that.
Even though there's a covenant that tells them about the temporary parking and what have you, once it becomes a public accepted way, that may change.
It may. So, you know, that remains to be seen, but at this point, if it was part of their covenant, then it was required.
So if they're successful, they should petition the road commissioners just to legalize the signs?
Yeah, I would say, and again, I could speak to Charlie and clarify that issue in terms of what his intent was with the comment.
Well, let me ask you a question then, Ken, Mr. Chairman. What happens with the drainage if it becomes a public accepted road? They have a covenant that they'll take care of the swales and the sediment, what have you, that could back up onto the road. If it becomes a accepted road, why would they bother anymore?
It's part of the homeowners association requirement.
And that, what I'm asking is, if one covenant is good.
From what I'm reading is they are asking for the roadways to be accepted and not including the drainage structures. Other than those that are directly in the roadway, which I don't think there are any other than maybe some berms to direct the water to the swales. I don't think there was any subsurface.
That gets back, that gets back to the issue of the homeowners association being recorded in 2004 and not on some of the deeds of the properties. So some of the homeowners are in their deeds, they're responsible for the maintenance and some still are not.
Well, I don't think they have that issue or that particular subdivision.
They don't. I thought it was part of Beschant, Beschant Way's provision. I thought it was part of Bichant, Bichant Way's provision.
He's, that's, you're thinking of another... Oh, yeah, this is part of Bichant Way. Did we get a notice that not all of them had to...
I don't know. I forget the dates of transfer of the deeds, to be honest with you, but I thought that that was an issue with some of the residents.
It was two thousand seven, it was transferred from Bill Bichant to the homeowners. Early on, when the development first was put in place, several homeowners had water in their cellars. And we have, that has not occurred for the past seven years.
When was the first home sold?
I'm sorry?
When was the first home sold in the year?
I believe it was 2005. I'm not absolutely sure on that. It was in that timeframe, 2004, 2005, and there were just a few houses. My home was the last house sold in the development and that was 2006.
And the homeowners association was recorded in 2004, you mentioned?
It was, the developer registered at the registry of deeds in 2004. It was transferred, the association was transferred to the homeowners in 2007. So about a year after I moved in. And the last notation on the report says, as soon as the deficiencies are corrected, you'll be happy to make an inspection and recommend acceptance of the Lynn Road and Bichant Way. Would there be any additional cost for that final inspection? Is that part of the fee that we paid for the initial inspection?
That, I don't know. I don't know if he included that in his estimate. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
We can check into that.
Okay. Yeah. The other trustees brought that issue up. We are, article twenty, I'm sorry, article thirty-four on the town meeting. And I'm just wondering, it seems impossible for us to get all of this done in a week. And just wondering, without final approval, would our acceptance, our request, our petition for acceptance still go to vote or what happens at that point? Because I'm not familiar with that.
Well, they do the articles by lottery, so even though you're number thirty-four, you could get polled in the first five minutes.
Okay.
Right now, without the work being done, they'll ask for a report from us and we'll state where we're at in a week, but maybe let it done the week, I don't know.
I'd like to think it could be, but I'm not terribly optimistic at this point.
We can check with council and see if you can be given a conditional recommendation. I don't know if that's possible, but in which case the acceptance wouldn't take place until the work was done.
Okay.
I know you're anxious to get this wrapped up and you've worked hard.
We would...
But in the past, town meeting has not been favorable to requests that would require the town to expend money if they had to go in and finish it. So that's kind of the situation you're in, so I think any positive response would have to be conditional on the work being completed.
Okay, yeah. FinCom stated that they were going to wait for this report before they gave, they initially gave approval and then they wanted to wait until this report was done. So it appears that it would be either conditional or not approved at this point, is that correct?
It's hard to tell the tempo of town meeting, but I would have to say it would be negative if the work wasn't done. I don't know. Board, have any thoughts on this?
As you say, we've put an awful lot of work into this and I'm just wondering whether it would be better to ask to remove our article. I don't know if that can be done. And or if we are, get a negative response, would we have to start all over again in our petition in the spring to have them accepted? Or, you know, would we be back to square one? Or could we go forward with what we've done already as far as the layout and the meets and bounds and all of those issues, once these things are all taken care of?
Can I ask you what the, is there a schedule on cleaning the swales? Tell me how often it's done?
We do them periodically. We have two neighborhood cleanup days a year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And as I said, almost all the neighborhoods, neighbors respond. There's a few that don't have the wherewithal to participate, but we've got a very cohesive neighborhood and people work hard and, you know, we get coffee and donuts and kind of make a day of it. So it's generally twice a year in the, but as needed, you know, if things look like they're getting clogged up, if weeds have started to grow there, we'll go in and remove them. And sometimes just a few neighborhood, neighbors will see that and they will just go and start cleaning it out and put the rocks in so that the water can flow into the basins.
Well, I noticed that the engineer thought they had to be cleaned when he was out in October.
Okay.
And I didn't know. When was the last time you had it done?
I think it was a few months ago. And I'll have to check exactly, but one of our neighbors who lives on, I don't know the particular, he lives right on the corner and the drainage ditch is right beside his house. And he's been maintaining it and I think he did it a few months ago. But I can check with him if you'd like to.
It may be a case of there's something additional that has to be done, other than...
Oh, possibly.
Other than mowing or... I mean, that'd be a good question for the engineer to see if there's something you're missing when you are cleaning.
Okay.
It may just be the inevitable formation of sediment over the years, but takes a drastic cleaning once in a while.
Can we get some answer about that from the engineer? I'm concerned if they're doing it by themselves, they may not be doing it down to the level it's needed or made or something.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So I've got a list of questions here to get to you before town meeting.
Well, I can talk to our homeowners. We maybe have to have a special fee to pay for some of the costs of the cleaning of the systems and that can be done. You know, we're, it's a great neighborhood, a good tax-paying residents of Wareham and people do work together and we'd hate to see the neighborhood go downhill and really like to see it accepted by the town. So we'd be full members of the town of Wareham.
Well, as you said, if you don't maintain the swales, then you start getting water in your cellars and things like that, so there's incentive to stay on top of things.
It has not happened for, as I said, about six or seven years now, but it did initially when the developer first built in, there were just a few houses in the neighborhood.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this warrant article? Very good.
I did have that question of whether it would be better to withdraw our warrant or to go forward with it in a vote. Can the warrant be withdrawn or would it be in our interest to withdraw it at this point and wait until the spring or...
Let me get some answers on some of these other questions and I could tell you better and get a better feeling of how we should handle it.
Okay. So someone will get back to me regarding that? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I guess I'd be looking for, if there's no questions or comments, anything? Look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaws. Notices hereby given pursuant to section five of the Mass Zoning Act that Wareham Planning Board conduct a public hearing in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., October twentieth, to discuss the following proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw. See if the town will vote to amend article three of the Wareham zoning bylaws to permit filling stations for gasoline, diesel fuel, and liquid propane by special permit from the zoning vote of appeals in the general commercial zoning district under certain conditions that take any action thereto. Mr. Proponent here?
Good evening.
Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn here tonight, working with Mr. Chris Gabriel, although I know he was the petitioner, sponsor of the warrant article, but, sorry, I'm a little bit too close to that. We have submitted a warrant article, Mr. Chairman and board members, that would allow for a filling station use in certain specific and limited instances within the commercial, general commercial zoning district. I believe you all should have a copy of the warrant article that was submitted to town meeting, but basically what the warrant article is requesting is that a filling station use be allowed by special permit site plan approval in the general commercial zoning district, provided that it is within two thousand feet of a state highway interchange layout, provided that the lot on which the use is proposed is a minimum of one acre in size, and provided that the lot would be located on or have direct access to Cranberry Highway, Route twenty-eight. We feel that this is a prudent and responsible planning approach to allow for a filling station use where it would be within close proximity to a highway interchange, obviously acknowledging that a filling station use is more apt to be utilized by motorists in a more heavily-traveled motorist setting like that section of Cranberry Highway. And we felt that it would be appropriate to put forth an article such as this as opposed to allowing for a filling station use to be allowed throughout the entirety of the town in certain instances, perhaps near residential areas where it might not be as desirable. So we believe that the article has a lot of appropriateness to it in terms of allowing for this type of use within that commercial setting. As the board is probably aware, the general commercial zoning district is one that's noted in the bylaw as providing moderate-scale retail service, office, and related commercial uses to be served primarily by vehicular access and allowing for that filling station use within that zone and further limited to be within two thousand feet of a highway and on Cranberry Highway would make appropriate planning sense. So certainly be happy to answer any questions you might have or address any comments you may have. We have appeared before the finance committee, Mr. Chairman, and they did recommend favorably on the article for town meeting as well. I know that when we were before them, a lot of the questions pertain to the economic impact that this might have. I know specifically, as the board probably knows, that there was a proposal before the Board of Appeals for a filling station use at the property owned by Chris Gabriel. We were before the Board of Appeals for a use variance in that instance because the use is not presently allowed. I think that the Board of Appeals acknowledged that the proposal made sense at the location we were talking, but I think that they had an issue with the justification for a use variance under your bylaw actually being satisfied. So it was suggested that we approach town meeting to instead change the bylaw to allow for the use and then come back before them for special permit and site plan approval. And I know at that point in time, obviously, we would need to be before your board as well. So simply by rezoning it doesn't allow for the use to be built. We would then need to go through a pretty exhaustive review before the appropriate permitting agencies of the town, so.
Where is, in the documents we have, it doesn't have the certain conditions that you referenced. Is that in the explanation that you put in?
Yeah, it was actually in the warrant article tag. I apologize, I only brought one copy with me, but it's in the actual warrant article, the motion that was...
So it's in your motion where you...
It's in the motion, yes.
Okay, because I don't have the motions in front of me, just the article.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So the motion talks about it being by special permit, site plan approval, and it says that it has to be in a lot with at least one acre in size. Said lot or any portion thereof must be located within two thousand linear feet of the layout of a federally designated interstate or interstate highway or interstate interstate highway interchange. And thirdly, that the lot must be located on or have direct access to Cranberry Highway, Route twenty-eight.
We did receive some correspondence on this. Says, "Dear board members, please be advised that concerned citizens have consulted our office regarding a potential shell gas station at or near twenty-five hundred Cranberry Highway. It's our understanding that the applicants have already been denied a variance and now seek to have the area rezoned for a specific purpose. As this board is aware, this particular area of Wareham was rezoned so that gas stations are not permitted by right or special permit. This was an issue addressed before the citizens of Wareham and this zoning bylaw is currently in effect. This area of Wareham has already been deemed to be oversaturated with gas stations. After being denied a variance, the developer seeks to have this area rezoned to allow this one particular developer to alter the current zoning in order to meet his individual needs. This should not be permitted. Zoning bylaws are for the benefit of the town and its people. There are approximately six gas stations within a three-mile stretch of Cranberry Highway. There are more on Main Street. To allow another gas station would not be a benefit to the town or the town's people. The allowance of a gas station further raises environmental concerns. Gas stations can leak or have spills caused by a number of different factors, including customers, lines, tanks, pumps, car accidents, and more. If a gas station was unsuccessful, EPA, DEP would be required to get involved in order to have the site cleaned up, which is a costly process and could cause an abandoned station to go unattended. This is a similar circumstance to the Getty Station on Main Street next to the Wareham Fire Station. Lastly, the reality of a gas station is that it will likely include a convenience store. This store will yet be another location for tobacco sales in the town. It will yet be another convenience store in an area that is oversaturated, as there are more convenience stores in the area of Wareham than there are gas stations. The citizens have expressed concern that the potential for specialized treatment in this case and that the board may overlook the needs of the town. This proposal is a backdoor attempt to prevent a business that Wareham does not need. The ZBA is clear that this is a type of business that requires a variance and the variance was denied. We hope you will consider these concerns when making your decision. Very truly, Andrea McKnight, Esquire." Just to make some, a little clarification, filling stations per se are not allowed in any district in town, not just, not just commercial, general.
That is correct. And if I could maybe just address a couple of points that were raised in that correspondence, I'm not sure actually who she is representing.
She's an attorney, says... She's an attorney, says that concerned citizens have consulted our office. And she doesn't say who, if it's a specific group.
Yeah, so I think the author is correct that the bylaws were modified back in two thousand and two to prohibit filling stations throughout the town. And I think that at the time it was cited, and I actually have a copy of what was submitted at the time, but what was cited is the, the number of gas stations that have opened up at that time. And there was a concern that there were, there are too many. What has happened since then is that there have been a number that have closed, actually. I think there's at least five retail gas stations that we're aware of that have closed since two thousand and two. So really, what the purpose of this article is, is to not allow them rampantly throughout the town in areas where I think, you know, many of the people were concerned before about them existing, but to allow them in a select location that's near a highway where it would serve a valid purpose as motorists are traveling to or getting off the highway system. With respect to the environmental issues, I can tell you that whatever's built today would be state-of-the-art, double-wall containment. You can rest assured that anything that's built would be perfectly safe with appropriate mechanisms so that any of that spill that may have been present at another location wouldn't be an issue with anything that's built under today's standards, so.
I have some questions.
The devil's in the details sometimes, and we don't have a copy of the actual motion. So could you go through those conditions again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know you wouldn't have a copy of them, but I only have one here. But I can tell you that it's, "Filling stations are permitted by special permit by the zoning Board of Appeals and the general commercial district only when all of the following conditions apply. Said lot must be at least one acre in size. Said lot or any portion thereof must be located within two thousand linear feet of the layout of a federally designated interstate or interstate highway or interstate or interstate highway interchange in existence or under construction by October two thousand and fourteen." So again, that is meant that it's under today's scenario, that if it's an interstate, that that's what it's measured from. And thirdly, that said lot must be located on or have direct access to Cranberry Highway, Route twenty-eight.
So it would need to have actual frontage, it could be back off the road?
I guess technically, it could be back off the road, but basically, given the properties that would fall within that two-thousand-foot criteria along general, that section of Cranberry Highway, I don't think that you'd see any that would logically not have it be right on Cranberry Highway.
And the interstate or intrastate federally designated?
Would be?
Did I hear you right?
Yeah, it would be one ninety-five.
And that's the only one that qualifies for that?
That would be the only one that would qualify, yes.
What's the difference between intrastate? Oh, they're all interstate.
I should know the answer to that, but I don't. I think it's a term of art that's used, but I will have an answer certainly before town meeting.
And so two thousand feet, where is, where is that? How far towards town would that be?
Just as a point of reference, the property that's owned by Mr. Gabriel, which is Mr. Chris, the hair salon, is approximately sixteen hundred feet away. So we thought that a two thousand number would be a round number that would make sense. There are not many parcels that would actually qualify in terms of having one acre within that two thousand. There may be, you know, a few of them, but they're, obviously, some of them are currently being used. For example, the lumber company is one that would qualify. But, you know, we feel like having a filling station use on that side of Cranberry Highway, given what's coming up in the future with, through your board's efforts and other efforts with Walmart, which will be opening, and other uses that are further up. You know, having a filling station, convenience store use that's located on that side would have some planning merit to it in terms of motorists being able to just take a right turn in and then a right turn out to continue on to the highway or to Walmart or wherever they might be going.
How far is two thousand feet in the other direction?
Well, actually, it's, the other direction is a different zoning district. That's actually stripped, it's stripped commercial on the other side, so.
Where does the, where does the general commercial end?
Goes off from Main Street.
Going north, it ends at roughly one ninety-five.
Zoning map right there, if you want to refer to the zoning map. Yeah, one of you.
Starts at one ninety-five.
Yep.
Down across a level eighty to right around Division Street, that's Division Street, which is where Perry's is.
Yeah, okay, so it's just beyond me.
Initially, when those zoning?
There's nothing down there except the Ford dealer that could?
That's two thousand feet from here.
I could, Mr. Chairman, I have a kind of a map that we've prepared that might be helpful if I could approach the board.
Access to highway? You'd have to have access to Cranberry Highway.
It has to be on twenty-eight.
This is a plan someone in our office put together, so this is I ninety-five here. This is Cranberry Highway as you come down. So the purple is everything within two thousand feet. This is Mr. Gabriel's property as a point of reference, the police department right here. So basically, it would end right where the police department property is, and then it would be in this, this stretch here. So these parcels here that are highlighted in yellow are meant to?
Where's the other gas station?
That would be right here, that's in green, right there. So this is our.
See, the only problem I have is if you're going to change that whole zone, then you put in two thousand feet, what about the rest of it?
In terms of?
In terms of, if you're going to change the zoning for commercial, general, general commercial, that's the whole purple shaded area.
Well, that's the portion?
You want to limit it to two thousand feet from the interstate is what you're saying.
Basically, we're saying that we're not changing the underlying zoning at all, but it's simply that anyone that is in the general commercial within this purple area would technically qualify for purposes of having the ability to go forth with an application for a filling station.
Yeah, I have a problem with that, I have a question with that. Is the two thousand feet from the interstate is one ninety-five, no?
Well, here's one ninety-five here.
Yeah.
And two thousand feet back is basically where this purple ends, so.
Right, so that's the two thousand feet right there.
Correct.
But the, but the commercial zone goes further?
It's not going, yes.
It, it does go further, yeah, it goes further.
Yeah, that's definitely a town meeting.
You know, our feeling was that, just given perhaps reluctance to see them allow townwide, that it would make sense to have them more limited in scope to an area where, from a planning purpose in terms of, you know, where motorists are traveling on a more regular basis and getting on and off the highway system, that's where you'd probably want a filling station use.
Yeah, I buy that.
Chris, up right down is Chris.
He's up here.
Here somewhere. So if this was two thousand feet?
I don't know if there's a scale on that map, and I?
No, there is.
I was just trying to figure out whether or not you could put a filling station in here.
No, that's beyond two thousand, the two thousand feet.
There's a high, there's an interstate highway right there.
But you can't get to it.
You don't have to.
You don't have to have access to the highway?
No, you just have to access to two route, to the Cranberry Highway.
Could be an unintended consequence?
That's?
May I ask what you're looking at? Okay, well, that is, Route twenty-five is not an interstate or interstate highway.
It's not a federal highway either way.
No, it wouldn't qualify, it's a state.
Yeah, that twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five is, that's, that's four ninety-five ends and twenty-five picks up.
Right.
That's a highway.
But it's not, it's, we, we looked into it so that we can get further clarification on it, but where four ninety-five ends, that's where twenty-five begins. Four ninety-five would be the end of the interstate system, twenty-five is actually state, so it's.
Okay, so the land, the land, the people that would have land down at that end of that zone, it wouldn't work. Because two thousand feet from it, then you still have to have access to Cranberry Highway.
Correct.
Well, they do, but they, but that's not a federal highway. I didn't know that twenty-five was, was an interstate federal highway.
Okay.
Okay.
My question.
Well, I was, I would say that's probably your biggest downfall is that the bylaw appears to be very self-serving. That would probably be the, I mean, from a constructive criticism point of view, if you. Well, I know I have had some feedback about people not wanting any gas stations, period, and some feedback about that particular stretch of road. I know when your developer came before us, he got a fairly favorable response from the board. He looked like a quality developer with a good product. Our only reservation was that's right where the road pinches down.
Sure.
And causes traffic issues.
Yeah, and I can, you know, rest assured that, you know, whatever input you had in on, on that process would certainly carry through to whatever would be proposed. And I do hear you, Mr. Chairman, that it seems like it's a little bit self-serving. I mean, what we're trying to do is walk somewhat of a fine line, I guess, where we certainly understand that there may not be a desire to see filling stations allowed on a wider basis. So we're trying to approach it in a more prudent manner, and that is, you know, how would you be able to limit them where frankly, it makes sense from a planning perspective to, to have them, so.
I know, just an observation from the market-wise, when the other station opened up there, you saw stations further away close because they lost their traffic flow, so. I think, get one over here, you lose one over there. Anyway, is there anyone here that wishes to comment on this warrant article this evening? Anything from the board? And I guess I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, let me ask a question also. This is, this is a vote for, just to get it on town meeting floor, too.
No, it's already on town meeting floor by initiative petition. They will be looking for a recommendation in one way or the other from planning.
Okay. Well, I quite frankly, don't have a problem with it going that way. Doesn't bother me in the least bit. I come up that road every single morning to get on the highway. Some of them are just?
A little closer to the mic.
I say, I myself don't have a problem with it heading that way on the highway. I go by there every single morning early. The only problem I have is the trailer trucks parked across the street from the mobile station locking the highway on both sides, but that's nothing to do with this. I kind of like the idea that they're, that they're not looking to change everything, they're just looking to change a certain portion to fit a business into the town. That particular guy's been a businessman in the town since I moved here twenty-seven years ago. I can't see not developing another business, so I myself would be in favor.
I'd say, from planning, I, I don't see why it wouldn't, why you would just go in one direction or one zone. I think if you were going to create that use, you would go north and south of the highway.
Well, that, that could be the, the comment, like you said, self-serving. They're trying to keep it without expanding it all the way down the highway. Because there's some people down past Chodgpon Road. You have the Ford dealer, you have, I don't know how far down it goes, but you have the Masonry Block play, you have people with a lot of land might say, we'll put a gas station in there, so. I suppose they could look at it as you could make the whole area, make the whole general commercial or just use the two thousand feet. I was kind of in favor of the two thousand feet, to be honest with you, but that's just an opinion.
Off quiet over there. Anything further? You wish to close?
Yeah, make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we will.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it very much, thank you.
We did have a discussion regarding the A and R that was submitted for Square Island Road that we were going to discuss.
I just have a note.
Good evening, one member called Madison G. A. McNurrie.
Good evening. We did make a site visit on that warm sunny day a couple Saturdays ago. And the only concern that we had was that particular section where the road wanders onto the property was awfully narrow.
Okay.
It was suggested that that could be opened up to, what'd we say, sixteen feet?
Yes.
Which is a kind of a standard roadway.
Yeah.
A lot of places on Square Island Road are already wide enough, but that particular stretch is kind of sunk into the ground with, with berms on both sides, so it kind of narrows it right down. Is that a pretty good description of?
The first lot looked like the road was wider and it was a lot flatter.
Yeah.
Both berms were fairly level with the road, so it looked like, we didn't measure, we didn't have tape measure, and it was raining out, but it looked like it was sixteen-feetish. So it looked pretty good. But then when you came down around the curve, we noted that the road did narrow down and it was certainly overgrown. And of course, that road seems to dive into that large parcel a little bit, and it looks like there's a parcel on both sides, and we weren't sure who owned both sides of that road at that point. But that road got very narrow, we think around twelve feet, and we think that that's just not good access. So our concern was that it would be wide to make sure that it's safe for vehicles to pass and especially in the event of a, you know, a fire or some type of emergency call, so.
I have a question about that, the first lot, nine dash nine. Your frontage was on, would have been on the traveled way, and this shows that you've basically created new frontage, moved the line back?
Correct, we're creating a forty-foot wide right-of-way for future purposes, and that's where the legal frontage is being taken place at, just like it was, has been done on previous lots throughout Square Island Road dating back to two thousand and five, done by other engineering companies.
Yes, so is there a deed of roadway easement to the other lot owners?
Correct, that would be all described in the legal description of the parcel when it gets cut out on the deed. So when the deed gets created for lot one thousand nine dash nine, they will have language in there about the roadway easement, stuff like that, because we have all those areas defined on the plan of what, what those areas are. And then when we do finally ever create a right-of-way for Square Island Road, that would be either accepted by the town or, or something. All those areas are. All those areas are already accounted for, it can be taken off, off the, off the deed, and we're showing that they have the required upland without using that area of the roadway.
Yeah, but you're, but you're not deeding to the other lot owners, you're just putting it on the deed to this lot.
No, all, it would, you're not, it's, the deed's gonna be ran, so that way you're not interfering with the rights of others to have the rights to pass and repass along Square Island Road. So the language in the deed would say, subject to the rights of others to have the rights to pass and repass over Square Island Road, we're not interfering with that.
I know that, but you're, you're trying to create new frontage, you're trying to expand the roadway. And you're moving the line back and saying that is the roadway frontage.
Correct, just as it's previously been done since two thousand and five.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't move that line back from the traveled way unless you've actually deeding it to the other people in the other, other lots.
That's why we have, that's why we have a right-of-way easement on the plan.
Yeah, but you, there, there's no recorded easement. In other words, you have to, you have to actually deed to the other people who own lots on the road a, a right to use that area. Just, you know, just drawing the line and saying this is it, or putting it in one person's deed doesn't give anybody else on the road the right to use that expanded frontage.
I'll drive right over.
I guess the question is, who owns Square Island Road again?
No, it's the area. In other words, if, if you look at the thing, the traveled way isn't a hundred and eighty feet. The only way you get a hundred and eighty feet is you move that line back from the traveled way to where the lot's a little wider here. And they make this to be frontage. Well, it only be frontage if it's actually frontage on a way. And that's not a way unless people have deeded rights to use it. On that area right in there, you have to actually grant somebody that right-of-way.
And.
Just put them on.
Well, my point is to who owns Square Island Road is normally the plotting property would own to the center of the road, or, or own to a point described.
They do, but, and it's subject to the rights of all these people to use it. So if these people can't use that additional area, what good is it? If nobody has a, has a right to drive on there, you can't really call it frontage. You know, between here and here, just it is, they're, they're calling it a road, but it's not a road that anybody has access to. Unless you, you actually deed it to the other lot owners the right to use that.
Well, who is the right-of-way granted to?
The right-of-way is granted to whoever has the rights to use Square Island Road. I can't sit, sit here and tell you five people have the rights to use Square Island Road. There's over fifty lots on Square Island Road. Twenty, fifty lots on Square Island Road, and there's currently seventeen built with house on them. And we're asking for two lots on Square Island Road at the beginning. The second lot coming in will be the third house on, the second house actually on Square Island Road. With the first house that has driveway access off Square Island Road legally has frontage on Fairney Hill Road. And then the remaining land on Square Island Road would be actually the sixth, where there'll be no house on it, but that would be the sixth house on Square Island Road.
All I can tell you is you can't create an easement just by putting it on a deed. Doesn't give anybody else
Creating the right of way.
On the road the right, the right to use that additional easement area that you put in there. Unless they have a deeded right, you can't do it just on a plan.
I'm a little confused here, because again, we're following what's been done previously in the past, and all these lots on Square Island Road, I've done the exact same way.
I don't know, these down on, on this, this section of the road are all part of one piece, as I understand it. And these people all got their deeds out of that, that's fine, but this is just a deed, you know, from, of this lot. And whatever you say on that deed doesn't give anybody else the rights to use that section. You have to actually create, you're, you're creating a roadway easement. You can't create an easement just by sticking it a deed, it doesn't give an easement right to anybody else. It only gives, only for that, for that lot and the person who deeded it to them, but nobody else can enforce that. Nobody else has a right to use the road.
I'm a little confused on that.
Well, you're creating an easement, and, and to do an easement.
We're creating a right-of-way easement on Square Island Road.
Yes.
Which is an existing way that existed prior to, to the subdivision control.
You, you're creating an additional easement from the traveled way out until this new lot line that you've, you've done.
Correct.
And that, and if you're doing an easement. And if you're doing an easement, it has to be deeded, it has to be created somehow other than just on a plan. It has to be an easement by a stopple, it has to be an easement by deed, it has to be created. And you can't create it just by sticking it on a plan.
But the easement we're creating is the easement for future purposes, that if someone, if we ever decide to create the layout of Square Island Road, everything is created on these plans, and you go away and say, as shown on plan of right here, so-and-so, we're taking that forty-foot wide right-of-way as defined on plans prepared by G A F, plans prepared by Alpha, that was done in two thousand and five, that created all these lots before us.
I can't tell you about those, all I can tell you is that Mr. Callahan, who's driving up here and he wanted to drive over that additional easement, he has no rights to do that.
He has rights to drive over the road.
He only has rights to do on the existing traveled way, but not the new frontage that you've created.
What he's saying is, I think, how I understand is, Mr. Callahan has, you're saying he has a right to travel over the road, well, the road's well-defined there.
Yeah.
You, you've put a buffer between that lot and the road. Mr. Callahan doesn't have any legal authority to drive on that buffer yet. You've used that to make this a buildable lot. You need to give that up in some way, so that all people who live on that road and have access to that road can use that land if they wish.
But that's what the purpose of this plan is, we're creating that extra spot to be taken out at some point, not being taken out today.
Is there another instrument that creates that right-of-way and gives it?
The only way you could do it on a plan like this would be a deed, you'd have to deed to the, to the other fifty lots the right to use that for roadway purposes. You, you can't create an easement just by sticking it on a plan and give easement rights to people who are not, have no relation to that lot. The, the case, the major, the main case on that is, was a subdivision, where, you know, when you do a subdivision, you have to extend the cul-de-sac across to the, a bay, the next land. So this guy bought a lot, it had one of those on there. And then they went to put in the road, and the court said, well, there's no easement, there was no deed. You have to have deeded it to this other guy, this abutter, who wasn't a party to the subdivision, they're just an abutter. Well, these people aren't parties to this formay. You have to actually create an easement, just putting it on a plan doesn't give anybody an easement right or tell you, you know, what rights you have or what you can do or anything. You have, have to do it. In the town, when we do a subdivision, if you've got an accepted way, you have the deed to the town, the utilities. You know, by, by an easement or by a deed. You just, town doesn't automatically have the right to go in there. So you're doing something like this, I don't know what they did near the lots, but just doing this on a plan doesn't create easement rights in other people, and if they can't use it, then it's really not valid for frontage purposes, because it's, you're not on a road. The frontage you have is on the traveled way, and it's not a hundred and eighty feet.
So again, is there an instrument that would?
They could do a deed to the other fifty lot owners.
Would each deed have to, would each fifty, would their deed have to reflect this new right?
No. Whoever's on that, owns that property can give a deed and easement to those people.
So the, the easement would have to be granted, as you described, to the people with rights to Square Island Road?
Yes.
So that document is, is created, or?
No, the lot hasn't been created, the lot hasn't been sold yet. It'd be written in the legal description of the deed, like it's written, that you have, people have the rights to use, or reuse. You know, you have the right to maintain, upgrade, and do whatever you need to Square Island Road. It's all gonna be within that forty-foot wide right-of-way shown on these plans.
But, but the only parties to that are the, are the people who are selling it and the people who are buying it, but nobody else is involved in that deed. And so they're strangers to that whole transaction, they, they don't get any rights out of that. They don't have any enforceable rights. So if they want, you know, if this person builds a nice flower garden right along the traveled way, and then you want to come in and knock it down, Mr. Callahan, I hope he likes, doesn't mind using it, he has no right to go in there. Because he's not, he was not a party at all to that deed.
Apologies to Mr. Callahan, if he's watching, his, his name was chosen at random. So if, when they create this lot, they attach easement description granted to all the?
Got the forty-nine lot.
The, the people who have a right to use the road.
The people that have rights to Square Island Road, does, does that resolve it?
That would, it would give you an easement, sure. But you'd have to create the easement by a deed or, or some other way, you just can't do it on a plan. Or you, you know, if you, you know, they can change the lot lines now. If you had a hundred and eighty feet on the traveled way, it wouldn't make a difference, because it's, that's existing frontage. But there, there aren't a hundred and eighty feet on the traveled way.
Now, I noticed when we looked at this down here, it was almost like at one point the traveled way was supposed to go along this line. Because this was all.
Yeah, I don't know how.
There was a fence even.
I don't know how he got frontaged, because he, this lot's not on, unless it's on, something down here. And see, when they built, when they did this, you see here, this is the lot line. So this, this is where they have their setback. And it, it's only on their land. And that's fine, because all these people bought on this plan, and they bought it from the same owner. So they have the same, they have the same rights. These people are bound because they get it from the same person that the rest of these people get it from. But, you know, actually, it really isn't probably, it's not enforceable upon people down here, because they weren't party to that transaction actually, so you really don't have enforceable rights, except for these particular people here.
So legally, if the town ever comes down there and wants to, let's say, pave that road, one of these people are gonna lose a lot of property.
They're gonna find those flower beds aren't gonna be there anymore. But, a-again, only the people that were on this particular plan
Right.
gave up those rights. Okay, these people, so there is a problem with that, but.
So how could he word something to, to, to put this to bed and do what we gotta do? How does he word a deed that?
Just an easement, and he, he grants an easement for roadway purposes, and it would say whether or not they can, you know, for all purposes for which roadways are granted, or travel only, or can you park, I mean, I don't know what these are.
So, a lead, which came first, because he's saying they will generate that upon filing this A and R, but. Which came first, the chicken or the egg?
I think he's saying they're only gonna generate it for that one lot. What Mr. Reed's saying is they need to generate that easement for the other forty-nine lots in order to make that lot a legitimate buildable lot.
Well, he's saying that it was, the easement would stay, it was, give rights to everyone.
But he said it was gonna be filed with that plan and, and per about lot, not for all the other forty-nine lots. But, that's how I heard it.
But the easement said for anyone with rights to Square Island Road, is what he said, which I think covers what you're.
I don't know, you could do it, if you're doing a deed to unnamed parties, I mean, I, I can't, I don't know, I need to identify them.
It has to be identified by, by party or by parcel, correct?
I don't think you need to identify the owners.
By party or parcel, at least that's my experience.
I think the parcel, I, I agree with you, Mike, what, what, well, what would be wrong, well, if he, if he, for example, lot three A, four A, whatever, all the way down, I don't know, forty-nine, it seems.
Well, I think that's just a number we pulled out of a hat, we don't know.
No, no, I, I just went online.
He said this fifty.
Maybe fewer actual owners, I don't know how many owners there are.
I just went online, I just typed in Square Island Road and got all the lots that are off Square Island Road.
Mm-hmm.
And it comes up to be fifty, uh, fifty lots total on Square Island Road, seventeen of them have been built. You know, other ones like Cranberry Labs and stuff like that, which would probably have to be built, but I'm just going based on the assessment office. There is a total of fifty lots off Square Island Road.
Well, that's easy, attach that list, done.
Well, we have, you don't know how many owners, actual owners you have.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, the right would be attached to the property, not the individual ownership.
It's an easement to Robert Perry and Douglas Powers.
And their successors.
And Mark Callahan.
Yeah, it would stay with the land, it wouldn't leave with the.
That's right.
That's why I, I had thought the parcel, you know, was that.
But if the deed says it's, for the people that have rights to Square Island Road, there's times to be less rights to Square Island Road, we can never determine who has the actual rights to it or not.
Well, for example, that forty-six lot subdivision on Upper County Road.
Upon the Fairney Hill.
There was a, that's, there was a little vote of contention as to whether they had rights to Square Island Road, do you include that too?
And we should, they did. And that was determined that they did. And I think Mike F. Peace brought that up last point, uh, when Bob Perry was trying to stop them, when they were demolishing existing buildings that were there and equipment that was part of that facility there, they were using Square Island Road and Bob Perry was trying to stop them. And they pulled out a piece of paper saying, we have the rights to Square Island Road, and we can do anything about it. All we're doing is not, we're not interfering with the rights of other people on this plan. We're just defining forty-foot right, right-of-way easement on this plan. And when the deeds get created, just like it did for lot one thousand and nine dash two and one thousand and nine dash one, it refers to the easement as shown on the plan of right here, and at that time was planned prepared by G A F. And it would reference this plan that was recorded in Plan Book Ten, no, Plan Number One Oh Three of two thousand and ten, and Plan Book Fifty-Five, page eight fourteen. Just like when you go to Bob Perry's property, it's this plan here that was done in two thousand and three. And they have all the same thing, where they created a forty-foot wide right-of-way, because there was no right-of-way for Square Island Road. And that's how they determined the frontage on all the lots. And, and that's all, that's all we're doing here, the exact same thing that has previously been done.
Well, Perry's situation's a little different.
Why is Perry's any different?
Because he owns the land on both sides of the road, and those people who bought from him wanted under a, a plan. In other words, they have a common grantor.
But the road comes onto our property, and Bob Perry does not own that.
No, and his, and that right-of-way stops when it gets to your property.
Correct.
Yeah, because there is, there is none.
And we own on both sides, we own parcel A, we own all this side here.
But you're, but that's only gonna, and his, his deed only gives rights to those people who are coming off his deed. In other words, the land that he owned, these people. In other words, the land that he owned, these people got it from him, so they are bound by that, but you, you may own both sides, but that easement doesn't go to other people along the road. Those are, those are third parties to the whole transaction, and they're not, they're not got any benefit out of your, out of your written plan or your easement, because they're not parties to that deed. I don't know what to tell you, e- except, I mean, you're using, you're creating this new frontage, you're using it, um, if you just used the traveled way, you'd be fine, and you could put all the easements you want on there, and you wouldn't need them, but you need the easement on this one, because that's the only way you get a hundred and eighty feet.
So you, so it needs a sep- well, if you create. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what instrument has to take place to, to, to resolve it, a deed to cut.
A deed to easement, yeah. I'm gonna tell a lot of people, but it, unless, only those people with the deed to easement could use that.
And you can't make it a blanket easement to anyone with rights to Square Island Road.
I've, I've never seen anything like, I don't think so.
Well, that sounds like.
You have no, you have no people, you have no actual identifiable people by name, so.
So, do you have to have by name, or to, to any, any owner of a lot on Square Island Road?
It would be current owners of all fifty parcels, and as he said, maybe someone owns ten of the parcels, so it would be common, it would be current ownership of the fifty parcels, forty-nine parcels, take that one out.
At least that's a little better wording than trying to list out fifty or forty or however many owners, no?
You wouldn't have that, you wouldn't have that many owners, I would think. Yeah, you can't just travel around from there.
Those other ones that get quoted. Bob Perry's, that's the original one.
Let me see, on that one, it's actually reduced the frontage.
You explain this to you, Bob. I don't know, yeah.
That, that case.
We're trying to look at.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
This is, this is the piece you're talking about, right, eight, this whole piece.
No, that's the last house, that's the first house that you see on your left side after you come through all these lots, and if you came down here, this is where that excavator was, or the the bulldozer or something was parked here, I don't know if you saw that on Saturday, but that's where they wanted us to be.
The only people who are bound by this, are these people from Perry.
Not when the other people come through, they're only down in Perry's house.
They don't have any right to, they wanted to come in and widen it, they, they would never do this.
On the, uh, on this, on these corner ones. It was actually, looks like it was created to, uh, to leave room for a layup.
Right.
The, uh, the actual original deed was by the road, which, doing it this way reduced it from a hundred and eighty feet to a hundred and fifty, but it left room for the layup.
That this, this, this lot line had one point went right up by the road, I thought.
Right.
Yep, well, that's fine, but this one doesn't, doesn't have a hundred and eighty feet, that's the problem, i- if you had a hundred and eighty feet, you wouldn't really care, 'cause it would be valid.
Well, a hundred and fifty is required, right?
No, one eighty is required.
It's one eighty, that, that's the problem, this is just one eighty, if you bring it back to this wider section.
Oh, so that's the other way around, they used the one eighty-six by the road and then created an easement that made it one fifty. On the other lot, on the corner, on these, this road went the other way, it showed a hundred and eighty-six, I think, by the road, but then when they put the easement in, it dropped it to a hundred and fifty.
That easement's for future development or future access, correct?
That easement's just created for when Square Island Road needs to be taken and created, so subdivision rules and regulations, whatever you wanna call it, then it's all there, and the legal documents can be prepared by just looking at the plan and saying, okay, we already have this taken out, it's three thousand square feet on this side, it's eight thousand square feet on that side, and all the areas on our plans exclude that right-of-way, so that way, we know, okay, exclude that right-of-way, we have a three acre lot, complies with zone. Lot one thousand and nine dash two, you take away the easement area there, you have sixty thousand square feet, it's a, a buildable lot, or complies with zone. It's not gonna be made non-conforming or anything like that when great, take out the easement.
So, I guess the only question is how do you describe that little piece of property owned by the individual that's within that easement?
Can you write that up real quick?
We, yeah, I mean, they've got the plan, they can.
I'm teasing you, I'm teasing you.
I don't need to be technical, Bob, but reality is, it's not an enforceable easement, so, you know, I, I don't think we can call it frontage back there, because other people don't have the right to use that, so you really have to use the traveled way or actually create an easement. I mean, well, there's four or five ways to do a legal easement, but in your case, a deed pretty much is the only way.
Is that something that could be done at filing, or should be done before?
If you sign the plan, you signed, you've already, so you already signed the plan.
So, a deed that gives the homeowners down there the right to use it.
For roadway purposes, yeah.
And once that's done, you, you then have frontage.
Then you'd have, you'd, then you'd be able to change the frontage from the traveled way back to the new frontage.
Now, I think Square Island Road is owned by, or that section of it is owned by Mr. Perry, am I?
Mr. Perry owns a portion from our property line to, to that property line, and we own on our property.
You own where it wandered under yours, but I, I know there was some sort of.
'Cause Bob Perry owns on both sides of Square Island Road, other than on our property.
Okay.
And then I'll downgrade, I'm not sure where he owns it or whatever, but I know on either side of Square Island Road, by between lots two A to lots S seven, he owns on both sides of the road.
Give it to you.
Do you have this? Do you want the plan from there?
No, I've got it right here.
Well, I would say that you'll need to create a deed for that little piece of property and, and bring it back to, to refile it. I don't see we have any, uh, Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, you know, I, it would seem clear enough, but I also see the glitch in it too, so. The devil is in the details, as we said.
It seems to me the point is, is that we're, we're trying to make sure that it's done properly now, so that there's no confusion in the future, where in the past, maybe some things, you know, you've referenced other plans that might have been similar or been passed, and I think our hope is just to do a good job for both the applicant and the town moving forward, starting today. So, our, our wish is that you make sure that all of your deeds and your easements are recorded correctly, so that there is no confusion in the future, and also that all of the roadway widths are, are safe and impassable, so I think, um, at least that's what I'm hearing here tonight. And I think that would be prudent for you to maybe make record of that for this application and future applications, that, um, some of the things that we're concerned about today maybe weren't as apparent previously, and so I think.
Can I ask why you didn't illustrate it right-of-way down further on one thousand nine?
Because we were not grading the lots there, it's just the remaining land, and it has more than enough frontage there that didn't even need to be depicted on the plan, and it's all on our property there.
You don't have to show frontage, you're creating this lot, you don't?
It's the remaining land.
So, this is gonna be not a buildable lot?
No, it's a buildable lot, it's just the remaining land, it's got the frontage that it has.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't show what the frontage is, the frontage would be the frontage on the roadway.
Yeah, which is like four hundred feet.
It doesn't, it doesn't show what the frontage is. We, we don't require the frontage to be shown?
Show the frontage right here.
No, it's not labeled on the plan, no.
What's that, five seventy-seven?
Demonstrates it right-of-way to that point, and then, 'cause I, 'cause I think it actually probably goes.
But their actual frontage is just this, this little strip right here.
So, would it be proper just to withdraw this and come back with a deed for that easement, or?
That lot doesn't have frontage, you don't, you don't, you, you should show the frontage on the remainder of the land, but on the traveled way, you've only got a small portion of that traveled way, technically, you, you should show it.
On the remaining land?
Yeah. I mean, I understand, you, you know, you got from one corner, you've got three eighty-nine seventy, you've got five seventy-seven ninety-two, I understand all that, but on the, on the existing squirrel island as it comes down, and the, and the little existed, you've got an existed traveled way, it's, it's, it's in, the, the traveled way is in on your property, we're back to the same thing, I think, with what happens if they wanna widen that road.
Well, that's, that's the area that we found was narrow.
That's, well, yeah, I mean, that's, so, so, you know, he's right, really, that, that's back to the same case that when you go up there, you, you're looking to move that lot line for future use, if they wanna widen the road, you're making that easement, but when you get down here, the traveled way is actually in on your, in on your lot. I think they need to figure, need, need, need to plan that a little bit better.
Whatever that distance is, we just don't know what the distance is.
What the distance is, yeah. Because if they ever went down there to widen that road down there, they'd be coming in onto your parcel.
Yeah.
And make sure you have your, your hundred and eighty, what, what have you, or you, or you widen the road or lengthen the road, whatever, but you might wanna show it now.
Well, I think if you, if you drew a forty-foot right-of-way from what is now the westerly right of, edge, you wouldn't go that far under the property.
Well, maybe not, I'm just, I'm just saying it's a good point, right, it's a good point.
You'd gain some usable land.
Yeah, yeah, well, exactly, be to his favor.
Do you wanna withdraw this, or, I don't know, can you extend the ANR, or agree to? Extend the timeframe?
I would probably suggest a continuous of whatever that.
You could come in with a deed depicting which.
And I will talk to the, to the owners, see if that's what they're willing to do, and then I can get a revised plan showing the frontage along the Square Island Road here on that portion of one thousand and nine, and I will see if they could have their attorney write up a deed for the legal description of that forty-foot right-of-way up in the front.
That sounds like the way to go.
Also confirm the width of the right-of-way as it currently exists, so that we'll see that and to know that, 'cause we, we're questioning part of that as being near twelve feet, and, and we really don't wanna see less than sixteen anymore.
So, you wanna know how wide the traveled way is?
Currently, and you, so that you'll have a good handle on what will need to be done in order that, for that to become a buildable lot.
Sixteen feet wide?
Yeah, I think that's what, uh, Mr. Chairman, isn't that what?
Yeah, that's what we've used as a guideline.
Used as a guideline.
Sixteen feet.
So, we took the widest point and kinda paced it off.
Well, that's what we've used in the past on other.
Sixteen feet on other, other ones?
On improved surface.
Right.
So you made me step in a puddle pacing a lot, didn't you? That was Alan. So moving forward, just take a six foot, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, do we need to see it sixteen feet on the ground?
Say it again?
Do we need to see it sixteen feet wide? Before the plan is signed?
Mm-hmm, well, we'll need to make sure that it'll be sixteen feet wide.
To make it a buildable lot.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't, uh. I don't know how that would work, how we could. I could say other than. Other than denying it, I don't know how you enforce that.
Under revised plan, a note to travel way there on our lot to be extended or widened to sixteen, minimum sixteen feet wide?
Yep.
It would have to be done before.
Right, I've, I've had to do that before.
Before the, before the plan is signed, or you could have it just listed as not a buildable lot and then take that off once the road is expanded.
Or a note on the plan prior to building permit being issued for lot one thousand and nine, the road would have to be widened to sixteen feet wide on our property, not the entire length.
Correct, on the parcels you're trying to permit. As I was told one time when I was applying for a permit, it's like baby steps, and I was the first step.
Not here though.
No, wait. Can we continue it, Mister Chairman?
Uh, with a. Request from the applicant to continue to.
We can continue the meeting till November tenth?
November tenth. Yeah.
Agreed. Well, I, I won't be here November tenth, but. It's not, no.
We'll do a teleconference.
Okay. Right, from Mickey's castle.
Okay, uh. With the applicant's. Permission, we will continue this to November tenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll write in the book there.
That was ninety six LLC, right?
Yeah.
What's Illinois Estates?
That's a new plan, a new application.
Oh, okay. All right.
So the next meeting is the tenth?
Mm-hmm, November tenth, uh, the only correspondence I had was a bill for the legal ads for tonight's meeting. I took care of that, uh. On the street layout. Mr. Board, any recommendations to make at this time?
For Baysha and this?
Yeah.
You know, just a, a personal, uh, comment, Mister Chairman, I mean, I've seen a lot of those come before town meeting and they've got a list of things to complete, they should complete them first and then come in and say. The engineer gave us a list of things in the fall, we've done them, here we are in the spring, a little easier to swallow. To stand up at town meeting and try and defend a person that's got five or six items to fix.
If they don't do them, what happens at the vote if they get denied? Are they allowed to reapply and is it a much more difficult process?
It is still up to the board of selectmen whether the street gets accepted or not, regardless of, of.
I mean, they certainly have been working hard, but I think it would be, and she just did get it today, it would make good sense, I think, for her to. Maybe withdraw and just reapply in the spring, so that she gets it done and there isn't any confusion and, and the townspeople aren't concerned about what's gonna happen with the town's responsibility financially.
My only concern would be I wouldn't wanna, wanna her to have to start all over again.
No, no, I agree, a hundred percent.
I think, you know, they've had an inspection, they've been given a list of things to do, and if we could kinda limit. Their liability to that and let them go forward.
But would the, but would the. Would the vote carry that way, or would they lose so many votes that it would become?
Well, I wouldn't want them to.
That's what I worry about, is you can't control the people who vote. I wouldn't want them to be denied, that would, I think that would be horrible.
I think you, they're prepared to withdraw it if necessary.
Mm, she seemed like she was.
And, and I, yeah, I don't see going with this, things still need to be done. And I have a concern about the swales, I mean, it's an unusual design and. I don't know if they know exactly what's required to maintain the swales, the depth.
Well, I think there's some education that has to go forward there, just, you know, cutting the grass and taking the trash out is, is probably not sufficient.
And that, that sediment can build up and then grass grows and you don't even think that it's, you think that's the new level, but. It may be inadequate to have, you know, what you need for the slope.
Similar to the bounds, if the bounds were put in and now they're all very, usually they stick those up, you know.
Yeah.
Sometimes we, about as move them, though they land. That's what I found in my own house, somebody dug up the corner bound and I found it rototill and laid horizontally. Yeah. But nobody moved it.
Yeah.
So are we. Are we suggesting they withdraw it, or we, or should we just give a negative recommendation? And suggest they withdraw it?
I mean, if by some. Feet that they get this all accomplished in a week, is it?
I don't think they will be able to, because they're, they're relying on a number of subcontractors to help them within seven days.
Well, I think one contractor could win there and.
But she said she was gonna call J C Engineering, she was gonna call J C Engineering to, to find the, the meets and bounds, and then she was gonna talk to a paver to correct some of the paving issues.
And they also have some fundraising to do.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure in a week that can occur, and, and she's worked awful hard to, uh. Not be successful, I think.
Well, I guess what I would like is the ability to be able to, if it was done by next Monday night, I would like the ability to support them, I guess is what I'm looking for. In a report, but, you know, if, if they don't feel they can, then.
You're saying that if all of the engineering requests and requirements are met within a week, that you'd, you'd like us all to vote in a positive manner?
Or, or give, or give me the authority to give a positive report on the.
I'm fine with that, if all, if all the items are met.
But if it doesn't look like they're going to, then recommend they withdraw?
I'm, I'm with that.
Is that a fair assessment?
That seems very fair.
Because the items would have to be done and then re-inspected by next Monday.
Inspected, right. Yeah, we need, we need Charlie to give a report that would cover the board.
Right, I think that would be beneficial to her as well, to have a report from Mister Raleigh that his requests have been met, Mister Minard.
And I think he's gonna charge, so I, you know, if they can't get it done, I don't know that they're gonna wanna.
Right.
Have him go out and tell them that they're not done yet and then send them a bill and.
Well, would, would Mister Minard have to cha- charge them, George, Mister Chairman?
Uh, no, but I, I don't.
He developed the list, if, if they say they're done, couldn't he go by and see if they're done?
Does he qualify?
Well, he did the walkthrough with Charlie and, uh, he knows what was, was cited.
Would it need to be approved by an engineer? So I, I guess my question is, is, that's what, what's my question, if he'd be qualified to approve all of the outstanding items, or if some of them needed to be looked at and approved by an engineer or some civil engineers?
He seems like a pretty bright guy, I mean, they just made him director municipal maintenance, I don't think he's any dummy, but he's got Charlie.
Oh, I agree, right.
I mean, if something really bothered him, I'm sure he could grab Charlie, but I think to fix the list that was given, I think he's, strikes me as a bright enough guy to go look at it, so.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, okay.
That's again, just an opinion, I don't, I don't know if he's qualified.
I didn't, no, I mean, does he have, I don't know what qualifications are required, to be honest with you.
Well, the use of, well, I'll tell you later.
All right, so. If that's a fair, uh, assessment on the street layout, that's. I guess I would like a vote on that, just to. So I have a report for town meeting? So if somebody would make a motion to. That they're comfortable with? I would make a motion that we not recommend passage unless prior to town meeting we receive a letter. Uh, certifying that the requested items have been repaired.
Did you request that helicopter on your?
Sounds like it's landing on the roof. So there's a motion, is there a second?
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved? Um. Did they put a number on this? The article for to change, amend, Article thirty six, amend the zoning bylaws. Anyone care to make a motion on? Any recommendation for that? I, I'm opposed to it, so. My motion would pass. I, I, I think that this, you've already got, just in that stretch, you've got one gas station, right at the end of the two thousand is, is the Ervings, there's another gas station, you go on the other side of the highway. There are gas stations in, and when they look at the plan they had, there were. Four or five parcels that, that could also have gas stations on them. And then you get off the highway, you're driving into town, that's what you're gonna see, is not, you know, the greatest entrance to the town. I don't think we need more gas stations right there. Personally. I just assume not, not to put any more in.
I have, my questions were if, if at one point there were twenty gas stations in the town and it's proven that five have closed, why can't they treat them like liquor licenses, where you can transfer that license? To an appropriate zoned area? And maybe get some favorable treatment that way, it seems to me that. I don't know if we have too many gas stations or not, because I don't know how you calculate that, but. I think that every town needs gas stations and good quality gas stations. And like, I agree with Mister Reed, I'm not really. In favor of another gas station in that area, although I think. Access to the highway is, is best suited for gas stations. But the way I look at it is you already have one at the V, as Mister Reed said, you have one across the street, and you have one on, on the other side of the highway. I don't think you need a fourth one in that general area. If the other one, if one of them was closed and you could transfer that license, I'd be certainly in more favor of that. But I, I know that that's not something that the town is entertaining right now, but. That seems to make sense to me, if, if the townspeople are concerned about the amount of gas stations. Why do they not treat it like liquor licenses, where they've limited the amount of licenses and they can be transferred within the town? Territory.
Well, right now, I, I, my feeling is the market should dictate how many they are, and the new business model for these types of things is gas station convenience store.
Right. I think the evidence is, though, if you look at the, uh, gas station across the street that has four islands, eight pumps, they are not jam packed busy all day. So to me, if I saw that, I'd be more inclined to say, yes, we need another gas station in that location, because that one is causing traffic problems, because people are always backed up. Other than the, the truck drivers stopping for coffee, I don't see a problem with the, the, the traffic there.
Well, what, what happened when Mobile opened up there, the mobile station down the road suffered.
Right.
And it's now gone.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
You know, they're playing the game closest to the highway, but as far as this particular bylaw. I mean, if. At least if you were going to say two thousand feet to this side of the highway, it should be two thousand feet to the other side too.
But that's a different zone, is that other zone?
It's just be, they just did that to, to limit it to Chris's place.
Oh, I know that, but my question is, is the other zoning on the other side of the highway, because it's different, is it more amenable to a gas station as far as the Z B A? Does the Z B A have, C B A have full authority to authorize a gas station on the other side, because the zoning is different?
No, no, they have the same problem, gas stations are not allowed in any zoning district. Under current zoning. So they're making an exception, they're making an exception on this side of one ninety five, but not on that side of one ninety five.
And you get, so that becomes either spot zoning.
Spot zoning, selective zoning, that's what I said.
Which is, which is, which is not a good road to go down.
I, like I say, I, I didn't have a problem with it, I, I, I know the guy, I know the property for years, I know what he's been trying to do. Personally, I didn't have a problem with it, zoning wise.
And I think we're in the same boat, we, I think we liked what was presented to us that night, and, you know, with a little bit of work. Around the state highway, it proba- it could probably work rather nicely, but from a zoning standpoint. I'm a little.
And there's, and there's another gas station coming down at twenty eight and fifty eight anyway, in the Rochester side, so.
Right, it's the same outfit.
Right, but is there really a need for a fourth station within, you know, a half a mile of the highway? I'm not quite sure there is.
I don't buy gas from Mobile.
So anyway, back to this particular article, would somebody care to make a motion? I would be not support the article. Just to put something on the table.
I would second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there a discussion? I think we had it. All those in favor of not supporting? The article?
Aye.
Right. Opposed?
One.
Abstained? There's four of us at night, three, one, zero. Uh, and I guess that's all I have.
Yes, he is an, as an observer, he's an intern in the planning office and he wanted to come and attend the planning board meeting.
He's a glutton for punishment. I get a feeling that that. But the phone calls that I've been getting on that particular one is.
Not good.
Well, some of them are kinda. You know, they start out neutral and then they go, I really don't wanna see any more gas stations in town.
I think, you know, I think.
And if you ask the guys with package stores, they don't wanna see any more package stores in town.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think if you could clean up the dead gas stations that are, you know, closed and abandoned. And spread those licenses around, I, I don't think that's necessarily a negative for the town, I think towns need gas stations and. I'm not sure they all need convenience stores, but that's the only way I think they can pay the bills today, if you think that the average gas station works on about fifteen cents a gallon, which is the norm. They're not surviving anymore, based on what it costs to develop a gas station.
Especially when the price drops.
Right, so, and the competitive nature of it, so unfortunately, the convenience store becomes the savior.
And, and the donut store and the sandwich store that's all inside, so.
But in our youth, they used to survive on a nickel a gallon.
I know.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, but they didn't pay much for those stations.
But they had a mechanic on duty and they had repairs going on.
Well, I think, to be honest with you, I'd rather see a convenience store than a mechanic bay. I think that, you know, especially if it's in a. I think that, you know, especially if it's in a visible area of the town.
But that's the way the business models changed.
Yes.
Yeah. So I got a question, though. When you stop and think about it, the votes that were taken about no more gas stations, that was back in?
Two thousand and two.
Two or three, yeah, back then. So you had X amount of gas stations, let's say twenty-five.
Twenty, they said.
Five are gone. What's that?
They said, I think they said twenty, someone said twenty.
Twenty, okay, so you had twenty and five are gone, you're down to maybe fifteen. It seems to me you drive around every corner, there's a gas station and bring extra liquors.
Unless you're on empty.
No, then I'm usually on four ninety-five, but, but the, but the thing is, is, uh, how, your, your point is, is a good one. What about some of the gas stations that, that are diving, you know, and maybe a good company like this other one could come in and save it, whatever. How does it work, George, with, uh, if you, if you've been here a lot of years? When does that vote now, when do you have to go back and take a look at that vote? Well, now we're down to, let's say we're down to ten, you know, and someone's coming in for a new gas station. When, when does the zoning or when does that policy have to change? I mean...
But that's, that's what kinda bugs me when, when, when you ban a specific use. It kinda bothers me from a planning standpoint, because you, you don't know what's gonna... The need will probably arise.
The reality is, is you really should do a study, you know, in two thousand and two, how many vehicles were in town? How many, how many vehicles came to town? How many gas stations did you have service in the vehicles? Today, how many gas stations are left? How many vehicles are here today? You, you have to check to see what the, the need is.
Well, you have, what, twelve vehicles, what, fourteen?
He needs his own gas dirty.
But you have to check the needs, you know, so. It would be very complicated to try to get the town to think about that, I think.
And it's funny, in the zoning bylaw, service stations treated different than filling stations.
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Which.
I have nothing to say.
Oh, no, that's fine. I don't know that well.
But to ban the use outright to all areas seems...
Seems a little strict.
Counterproductive.
Well, that's what I was asking. I mean, you know, almost how do you go about bringing that back up, you know? We don't need to yet, I guess, but.
You'd have to make a case that you've got, you know, this need and you've got six stations that have closed and, and they're no longer suitable for really for gas stations because the parcels are so small, like on Main Street, I mean, that would, you couldn't make that a gas station anymore because you need, with the cost of the canopy, the end, the tack, the, the double wall tanks, you can't.
That's the thing, is you know, back in the day, it was nice. You drove through the center of town.
Scratch tickets and cigarettes.
Yeah, that's not always great.
It's gone now.
Yeah, I know.
There are businesses in the town that pay their mortgage for just a lottery, so.
There you go. We all set?
So, let me just say that, I know this got awful technical with this thing about the roadway.
Mm-hmm.
So, but, but they're adding this section and, and it doesn't really create a right to somebody else. And the problem, I think, is, um, somebody buys that, that lot and they build, you know, a wonderful stone wall and flower gardens right up to the traveled way. They think it looks great and then people come in and say, we have to widen the road. And they say, well, you can't take down my stone wall because you don't have any easement rights over that. It may be on the plan, but you weren't part of that deed. So, I mean, it sounds like probably no one would raise that objection.
A void would.
But in, in that case that I cited, yeah, this guy had a roadway going through his lot and he said, well, I don't care, I know it was there when I bought the lot and I know it's on my plan, but nobody gave an easement to this guy next door. He wasn't part of the deed, so it's not enforceable. And, and that's the problem with this, and it's hard to do a deed with all those people who have rights to the road. But the reality is you couldn't force that person to, to widen it or take down their stone wall or whatever. And, and that, in the end, will be a problem because there's a lot of land back there and they're gonna wanna make that road bigger and bigger and they wouldn't be able to.
And I think, and I think Mike's point, uh, Saturday when we walked through was, was an extremely legitimate one, that, that quite frankly, who cares how it worked in the past, just stay consistent moving forward. And I think he was speaking with Alan at the time. I think it's a, it's a good point, Mike, because what happens is, is all that land down there, someone else is gonna come in and wanna, like, like you say, next thing you know, that road's gonna have to be, there's gonna be a hundred houses down there and sixteen feet's not gonna cut it.
That other, the remaining land that he referred to and that lot that we weren't creating, on our A and I checklist, any remaining frontage of adjoining land in the same ownership is supposed to be identified.
Right. Why we got them?
It's just, I think, you know, the past practices, I think the board has always tried to help the applicant and I think that, um, maybe in some cases a little too lenient and, and maybe the future's gonna be a little difficult because we've, we've been trying to do a better job for the town and and try to make sure we, we enlighten the, the applicants and their, their engineers. And I think for a while, it's gonna be a little bit of a skirmish and some conflict, but I think inevitably, uh, they know really what is right anyways and they're doing the minimum because I think we've accepted it for a while.
Well, sometimes something like that would turn up years later. Some title insurance company will pick up on it and it'll deny the guy financing or something because there's something wrong with his title, you know? And, uh, it's happened in the past. It was a fairly large piece of land that, uh, some title insurance guy picked up that there was no legal access to it. Now, that piece of property's changed hands several times since then, so.
Oh, yeah.
Well, there was a case where the, um, a street ran right up to this property and they wanted to extend it and they couldn't because they had no rights to that street.
I've designed, I've designed plans like that where I left myself a ten-foot buffer that, that I control.
Just in case.
Just in case, because other people would wanna make more development and I thought we did enough and, so.
Well, you, you, you heard the comment from the one engineers, well, the other engineer and the other engineer, you know, that's what they did. So that's why I just, I, I liked your comment Saturday, just stay consistent.
Well, the, that previous plan, the lot had a hundred and eighty-six feet by the road.
Right.
But when they put in the roadway easement, they only had a hundred and fifty, so it was the opposite situation where they...
And the plans, those were just the JAF plans. The plan before that, the original one that he did, was not a JAF plan and it showed these lots that we were looking at, their frontage was the traveled way. They didn't have any, there was nothing in there about expanding. They, they made that up for those lots.
Creative engineering.
Yeah, that was the point I was hearing from your discussion was that he wasn't, he didn't have legal frontage on the lot he was trying to create.
Didn't have legal, unless he created, indeed, an easement rights to change the, the frontage line. That's what he was trying to do, is change the frontage line back where he had a wider, wider lot, because the lots are like that.
Which is fine, as long as he does what he needs to do. I, I don't have a problem with that.
And, and it would be great if he just left a hundred and eighty feet on the, on the traveled way and, and we wouldn't care.
I don't think he had the frontage. I think he was short.
Yeah, he didn't have a hundred and eighty.
Well, when, when they divided that up, because they did that division.
Yeah.
I don't know why they couldn't have moved that line a little bit. I think they counted on being able to
They were, they were basing.
Change the, the configuration of the road.
They were manipulating based on previous decisions.
At that particular time, it was a separate owner.
On the two different lots?
I think they, they've since acquired this piece. I think. There was, there was a different name on the earlier plan.
Yeah, well, JAF did all the plans, though. They could've.
They may have done it in anticipation of acquiring that because it was, it was up for grabs for a while.
It was beautiful, though.
Yeah, nice piece of property. Anyway.
So what are we doing when they come in? Are we, are we talking about an endorsement with a requirement of no building permit? I don't know if we can do that. Unless they widen the road or do they have, do we have to see a widened road?
His suggestion was what I was forced to do in the town where I had the same request. I'm not opposed to that as long as it's lived up to and fulfilled. I don't know how you monitor that because we don't have the staffing to check every little thing we do, but.
And that, from a market, marketability standpoint, I would think before he sold that piece, he would want to move the right-of-way or the, the traveled way over to the property line.
Right.
I think he, because right now, it, it consumes a lot of his property.
Right. I think the question was about the sixteen foot and, and.
Yeah, how do we enforce that?
What I had to do was I had to do the, um, change and then I had to have my engineer, um, approve it and stamp the plan that I did it. And then they, then the town was very willing to give me everything I asked for. They were great, they, and they were right. I was the one that brought it to their attention. I said, this isn't a safe right-of-way, but I wanna build this house, so. And they said, fine, just do what you need to do to make it safe. And I did the same exactly. But they did make me prove it, the planning board did make me prove that I did the work first.
Before, before they signed the plan?
Before they approved my plan.
So he said.
Which wasn't a big deal. It took, it took a week, so I, I, you know, I was back at the next meeting.
Yeah. I, I'd like to see it actually done.
I think that makes good sense because the town doesn't have the resources to monitor it, put it back on the applicant as they did to me and it wasn't a big deal anyways for me, so.
Well, he had, he had mentioned when, when leaving that, that he would put that on the plan because the lot's not sold yet, so in, in this case, I don't think you're gonna get anybody to do it in advance.
Well, I think you're gonna see another subdivision there.
Oh, yeah, this, he's gonna split the other one, he said, so.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you're the good.
But the other one, the other one's a good point, though. If you go down to the further one where, where Bob was showing earlier, if he doesn't put the frontage on that, when he splits that half, he's gonna be back to the frontage thing again.
Right.
Because you notice he made the comment that he said, only on the, only on the traveled way, not our whole front. Well, if you split this thing down here into two more lots, now you, now you need frontage on that road again.
Right.
So he's back to square one again.
He could commit with a little roadway.
That's what I was thinking.
Eight and a half acres upland.
Right. Which even makes the other road more important.
More important.
It just would be good to, if we could work with the applicants to think ahead. You know, what's, what do you think's gonna really happen in the future so that when they come to us, they're prepared and it's not a back and forth question and answers kinda deal? So the more we can educate them now, hopefully the better it'll be in the future.
They're worth giving a call on, telling them to do it, George?
Well, I think probably the only thing that's keeping this from being further cut up is some pending litigation, but.
I guess my concern is they come back and we say, okay, this is better, but now we need you to build the road.
Yeah, that's.
And then come back again and I guess he should be definitive. I don't think he's gonna, I don't think he's gonna, he's been deemed in a... Two weeks, or is it a week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, the tenth, well, that's three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah, actually.
Right.
I bet you could get it done in three weeks.
Right. He only has to do that section of the tram.
What I call.
You have it in the morning. This is good, we got someone new to pick on. I was the guy, now it's you.
Thanks.
Are we all set, Mr. Chairman?
I wonder when that layout was created, is, is Carolina? Or is this just, or was it not created, it's just a line on a plan?
He hasn't shown it as really defined.
Well, the, the traveled way one is, but the right-of-way doesn't seem to, it seems to have consistency.
Oh, you mean by the Perry lots?
Well, all the way along. I mean, it's, looks like somebody's drawn a forty-foot right-of-way up until you get to this pound on the property.
Right.
Well, when Perry did it, he, he created that forty-foot from, from that, from that line nine dash nine, right along, fronting on those lots. I mean, that was his creation.
But where he stopped, it gets fuzzy.
Gets, yeah. Well, but, but, but seriously, the question is, even in front of Mr. Perry and,
Yeah.
and the Powers and the Callahands and the Gagnons and the Squirrel Island Estates Limited, you get all those lots down there. Where's the center of that road?
Well, if you looked, if you looked the way the fences ran here,
Yeah.
it looks like Squirrel Island Road should come down this way and not meander over there.
Okay, well, that's... So I'm getting it.
That's why I wondered where that, like, I know where this pound came from, I'm just wondering where this pound.
Might wanna see it later.
And I think that's the important part that we need to get across to the engineers is please give us more, not less. Give us more so that we can make informed decisions to help them get what they need and want and we're doing the right job for the town.
Well, that's always a common.
Yeah, but that would've taken, not, it wouldn't have taken them, what, a half hour or more of a little more research and a little bit more plan. See that as a big request.
So is the directive to have him widen the road first, like Mr. Reed said, do you, how do you wanna treat that? So that way he doesn't come back to the tenth and then you tell him to do something else before you assign his plan? So what do you think on that note?
He said that he thought he would put it on the plans for approval, but that before permits would be issued, the work would have to be confirmed.
He did, but.
He said that.
He, he did say that.
So I guess my question is, is what we need to ask him is, he needs to be the responsible party to confirm the work is done before the applicant applies for any permits.
Yeah, they won't. I think, I think you're, you're right, Dave. Maybe, maybe you should contact him. I kinda, now that I think about it.
But he's the one that offered that.
Yes, sir, but now, now that I think about it, you, you, you're counting on, they're, they're talking about selling these and splitting the other ones. He couldn't care less who's gonna to buy it and, and do it.
It'd be job security for them because they know they have to come back to JAF to get it.
Yes, right. I, I mean, I, I don't think it's a negative for the engineer to have that responsibility. I think it's a positive because the applicant understands that they have a responsibility to, to correct the road and before they can get their permits, which are not gonna be held up as long as they've done what they're promising to do.
As long as that's written on the plan, I think we're fine.
Well, the logistics of it would be if somebody walked into the building department and applied for a permit and showed their lot with their approval and
Yeah.
where, where's the checks and balances, unless it was written right on the plan.
Right, can you condition an A and R? That's the question. So if you can.
Yeah, well, you, you can take an A and R, just like we did with the first one today and, and it writes on, this is not a buildable lot.
Yeah, but that's not what he's looking for. He's looking for it to be a buildable lot.
Can't, can't be a buildable lot till the road's done.
Well, unless, well, this particular engineer said that if he puts that on the plan.
He said he would put it on the plan.
No building permit until the road is wide.
Subject to the road.
Yeah, he wrote not to be considered buildable until.
Meeting the minimum, the, the road requirements.
Till road meets minimum standards.
I agree. How do, how does a building inspector know that, though? He's, I hate saying it, but the building inspectors are so busy that they're not gonna take necessarily the time required to review that planning board approval.
I could talk to Dave Moore and see if he has a recommendation on how we, how we tie this communication together.
See, the question is, can you condition it? I think that's, you, you can condition it by saying it's not buildable or it is buildable, but beyond that, I don't, I think it's a problem. And you, basically, you're saying this isn't buildable unless the road is wider, so it's not buildable.
You need to talk to him.
If you, if you said not buildable lot without planning board approval, which is basically the same thing.
Is this a policy that the planning board's planning to adopt?
Well, then he comes in and the planning board approves it, they go out there and it's sixteen feet of compacted gravel. You sign an approval and then you can go to the registry and you record that and it's, you're not worried about it.
That might be what we're looking at because... That might be what we're looking at, because the checklist now for building permit has sign-offs like that included. Sometimes, I know I saw one for an addition where they did, they scratched off planning and this and that. They just checked off conservation and assessors office, because that's always appropriate. But there is a check for planning, so...
But then you're, you know, you're anticipating that the planning department
Yeah, if there's not the same people sitting here that knows, know this discussion took place.
Right, it's gonna be able to research and confirm it. I mean, you know, right now, we're shoddy and we're working David to death on both departments. I mean, things will be missed, you know, um... The other, my other question is, is seriously, are all the planning board members on board with toeing that line of sixteen feet?
Yeah, I...
And what are you gonna do with the next applicant who says it's a hardship? And, you know, I guess my question is, I know we're here to help the applicants and we're here to do a good job for the town, but is everyone gonna...
Well, we, this board has used that as a standard.
But I don't wanna make this poor man crazy and then find out the next applicant gets approved at thirteen feet. I, I don't like that. If it's a, if it's something that we agree to, then we need to agree to it.
Well, that's, that's why I agreed with the comments you guys the other day, that, that moving forward, consistency, so... I mean, I was on zoning for a lot of years. I've only been here a couple of years, but I gotta tell you, is, is it, it seems to be different for a lot of people in the town. Some sail right through and others get beat on the head with a stick, so I'd be all for it. If sixteen feet is what you've used, Mr. Chairman, let's stick with sixteen feet.
I can think of only one exception where we, we allowed a little leeway was because there was a wetlands issue and it was only servicing one house, so, you know, it was a short piece on a paper street.
Right.
You know, a street that could've been built ten years ago.
Right.
So, you know, where it only serviced one house, we did allow it to pinch down to twelve feet to get around a wetland, but that was the only...
I mean, I just wanna make sure we're fair to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and I, and of course, you know, as a newcomer to the town, I don't know anybody. I don't feel like, you know, I would need to make that exception in any way. But I don't wanna put anyone else in a position that's very uncomfortable and then find that there's issues.
Yeah. Not here.
I mean, even on a, an accepted, on a paved way, we, at one point, we were doing eighteen feet with vertical curb on both sides and it's just not practical, especially in the wintertime.
No. But you're gonna have a lot of engineers come to us and say, "You approved it five years ago. You approved it ten years ago."
Approved it eighteen months ago.
I think, I think we need to stop that and, and tell them nicely that what was approved previously is, you know, is a previous decision. It's not today.
Uh, well, there was one point where we didn't allow Cape Cod burn and the town did Main Street and Cape Cod burn from one end to the other.
Yeah, there's a statue on that. So what are we doing with this, with the widening? Are we, are we putting on, "It's not a buildable lot"? Are we telling them to fix it first? Are we telling them it's a unique approval by somebody for permits? I, I don't know what position we're taking. I, I would either tell them, "You gotta do it first," or put it on the plan, "Not a buildable lot without planning board approval." Just because nobody's gonna buy that lot to build on it without seeing a recorded approval on record. And, and that's, you know, that, that's gonna be your, your backup to make sure that it's done.
Yeah, that seems like, that seems like a reasonable... You know, if they don't wanna drag the equipment in there and spend the money to widen it now, they can they can make it part of the construction process.
They might wanna straighten it out a little bit there, I don't know.
It seems like, yeah, to me, I would think they would wanna shift that to the very limits of their property and not have it moved in.
The thing is, and they could do it in the roadway layout, but as we just discussed earlier, they don't have the right to use that roadway layout across in the Powers House, because they were never part of that
Right.
plan or that deed.
Right.
You know, it would be nice. You could straighten that out by quite a bit.
Well, I was gonna say, we saw that Saturday when we walked it and I think we all standing there scratching our head and say, this isn't what is gonna really work for the future, so how do you fix that?
Right.
Especially with the neighbors already built and entrenched across the street. You need to be able to fix that somehow, but it's gonna be difficult.
It looks like the neighbors have built to where the road should be.
Correct. Oh, yeah. Yeah?
But nobody wants to reach in their pocket and move it over there.
No.
So you wanna give him a call, George, and straighten out those couple of things, or have Dave, someone? You've got nothing to do tomorrow, right, Dave?
I can call. Dave's a good sport that way.
Yeah.
Anyway, we've kept Dave up past his bedtime.
Yeah. So, all business done? Motion for adjournment?
That would be welcome.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, meeting adjourned at nine thirty-seven.